Here he is.
We need a Johnny. Here comes Johnny.
Yeah.
Here's Johnny.
And Doc.
Well, it is six thirty and we do have a quorum. So I would like to call to order. The regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board held via Zoom for February third, two thousand twenty-two. Are there any updates to the agenda?
There are not.
And we have the minutes from January sixth. If everybody's okay with that, I'd like to accept them as is.
So moved.
All in favor?
I agree.
Okay, under communications and announcements, we have quite a few emails regarding the colony. Not going to go through them all, but just to say, as usual, most folks are in favor of the beer garden, but not the amplified amplified noise. And then we have a letter from Solinsky regarding our ethics forums that are due on the twenty-fifth of January. I don't know if everybody got theirs or not, but you gotta get them in. And
I sent emails today from the ethics forums, so if you got an email from me, it wasn't in and just get it back to me. Thank you.
Okay. And then, as I said, from Bartle regarding the CEA and February eighth Town Board Meeting received February third. And the rest with it from the colony. Okay, so under scheduled business, we have two sketch plan reviews. And then at the end of that, we have a discussion and review of the scenic overlay. Changes that we'd like to make or things we'd like to do different. And then a discussion of what we'd like to do on the March thirty-first workshop. And at the very end, we have to designate site reps for all the cases we did last meeting. So since it's not a public hearing, the first case is a sketch plan review for Angelina Maria Viera and Justin Paul Baracus and Gregory A. Harowitz and Amy L. Block, which is planning board case twenty-two, one, two, three, zero. And this is a sketch plan review of a subdivision application for a lot line revision to transfer one point seven acres in the R three zoning district located at twenty twenty-two Deval Road. And it was originally two point six acres. And twenty-nine Broadview Road, which is originally twenty-three point two acres. And this will result in two new lots of four point four acres and twenty-five point oh five acres in Woodstock. And the representative is Justin Baracus. You are here.
I'm here.
Okay, great. Please tell the board what is it you'd like to do?
So I already have an existing plot. And as you can see, there's a there's a little bit of a, I guess it's like a thumbnail that essentially cuts right into the line along the Sawkill that represents the old, I guess, Sawkill River Line. So I made an offer to Gregory, my neighbor, to buy that little thumbnail, the one point seven seven acres, so that I can combine it with the existing lot. There will be no changes to the land or the area. It's just essentially taking my lot line across the Sawkill and transferring that parcel.
I haven't seen the actual map showing exactly which portion of that you're trying to transfer. On the map Judy had up, I assume the thumbnail is the piece.
Yeah, I'll I'll open it for you. Just a second.
Thanks, Judy.
I thought I had it open, but I seem to have closed it.
And so just to be clear, there's no development plan? This is just a lot line revision?
That's right. There's no development, not going to do anything with it. It's just to essentially take that piece on, I guess, what would be our side of the of the creek and combine it into one parcel.
Now, is this the right draw? This is the correct drawing, right?
Right.
If you keep going through that, that might just be his application. Yeah.
I did not get any other graphics for this application.
I can show you guys it.
Okay, stop share.
So it's that little section. If there's no planned development, the only thing I can remind you, of course, that there's a hundred foot setback from the banks of the Sawkill. And as you can, as you well know, the Sawkill is pretty wide there and meanders around. So
Yeah.
And but short of having the actual map showing the exact piece you want to to add, I don't see any problem with it. Let me ask the board members. Any board members have any questions regarding this proposal?
So it's essentially recreational use?
Yeah, I mean, not even. I mean, we don't actually, it's yes, I would imagine it's residential use, not necessarily recreational.
Yeah, that's what I did. It's your backyard. We're not Melissa.
Is it possible for me to present? I have it in front of me. Oh, there you go.
Good. There you go. Sure, sure.
I don't think I got that because I looked for it.
Okay, here we go.
Yeah, if you scroll down a little bit.
Okay, talk me through this. Thank you.
Oh, if you I'm sorry, scroll up a little bit. Thank you, Melissa. Okay, there it is.
So it's right in the corner. Here we go.
Yeah, so you see the creek there, right? And then there's the revised lot line per the specs on the planning board requirements. So it's it's like that thumb, right? So my property actually goes around that that thumbnail. So
It's very nice.
Yes.
But the property line is going to be right down the creek as it is now?
Exactly right.
Okay.
And it's literally just woods and all of that, and I have no intention of developing that into anything.
Yes, I'm very familiar with that area. We surveyed the lot right there with the new house and of course, the dog park. So I'm familiar with the area. Everybody on the board is okay with it. I think we can wait further review. It's
With just the caveat that the stream might move again.
Yeah, that's 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 real possible. It's real possible. I mean, generally for any lot line revision or subdivision, we do site visits. But I can, I know that area and there isn't much to see. So if anybody on the board feels they want to go take a look, otherwise I suggest we can wait for the review.
Yeah, I just have a question.
Sure.
What's your what's your reason for wanting to do this?
My reason for wanting to do this is I think what ultimately happened is like that it'll most likely increase my property value because I'll have essentially along the creek line. But I have no absolutely, absolutely no intention of ever leaving there. So it's really just to sort of, if Gregory ever sells it or what have you, I want to make sure that it's at least all connected into one parcel.
It makes sense to me because what you've got now is this little gerrymander and that would be a chunk of change.
A gerrymander, perfect word. It like literally like if you can see like my property line like across from my house. If there's a tree over there, it's like it's all it goes around versus just being connected into one cohesive parcel.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Yeah, as I said, that creek is meandering and you are in a floodplain area there. So but if you're not planning to build anything, there's no worries about that. Anybody else on the board have any question or are we okay with waiting for the review?
I'm okay. So am I.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, John. All right. So we're going to wait for the review on this.
Justin, you don't have to come back in front of the planning board, but we just have to take care of some paperwork. Me and the planning board at the next meeting and then I'll be in touch with you.
Wonderful. Thank you, all of you. I appreciate it. Thanks, Melissa. Look forward to working that out with you.
I hope you have an easy one once in a while.
Great. Fantastic. Enjoy the rest of the meeting. Thank you so much.
Good luck. Well, good. Okay, our next sketch plan review is Miles Skeptidin is SUP twenty-two dash six, six, three. And this is a sketch plan review of a special use permit application to construct a garage in the scenic overlay in R five zoning district located at sixty-two, the middle way and Mount Tremper. And do we have a applicant presenting this?
You, Miles.
Yes. How are you? I hope everyone is well and everyone can hear me well.
Why don't you tell the planning board what you're planning to do?
Yeah, so essentially, this is a property that I purchased about three and a half years ago now. And essentially, as a drive, my driveway comes down into about the center of the property. And I wanted to just place a garage on the opposite side of my driveway. And it's essentially just going to be used for vehicle storage. The garage ideally, I wanted to make it a little bit larger so it can fit up to four vehicles. And basically, there's two garage doors on the front and then it's it's just a little bit longer so you can drive kind of two cars in on each side.
I've got all that stuff up where you can, I can show it if you want me to.
That would be great if you have what was on the application showing kind of the placement of it on the plot and
That's one drawing.
Yeah, so that's the super basic thing on the building permit. Yeah, I think this is the most helpful. Yes, so you can see how my driveway comes down and then essentially right to the right of where the car is parked there. So opposite the house, instead of parking my car outside, we wanted to put a garage there. And so it was above the, I believe, three hundred fifty square feet. So I did need to and it's in a scenic overlay district. So I just needed to make right there. Exactly. Yep.
And you want a downslope, aren't you?
Yes, you could describe it like that. Yeah, slight downslope.
Okay, again, I'm quite familiar with middle way. I don't know if any board members are that familiar with it, but I can assure you that it's not on the side of a mountain and it's not in the view shed. It's you really can't see it from anywhere. Being a hundred foot setback off the property line is about as good as we could ask. I don't know if that area, but most of Riverby had a green belt around around the lots, which was, I think, close to fifty or a hundred feet. So you're well past that. And I believe that you have no outside lighting on the building? Or if you do, it has to be dark sky compliant.
Okay, yeah, that's good to know. I honestly hadn't really thought that far ahead. The plan right there is a very basic structure with just and that's the example structure. Yeah, with two garage doors on the front, there's one door on the side. And four windows, two on each side. And I was doing it in all natural colors, like the door also would be brown, not white. And so it would all kind of blend in. My house is brown as well. So it's not a tall structure. It wouldn't be like above the tree line or kind of visible from any views.
So the main thing for us in the scenic overlay is to make sure that if there's any lighting, it's dark sky compliant. Your windows are within the glazing specs, which they certainly are. And that the colors of your building are the fit our color palette. You will have to get Melissa a sample or at least a color a color sample of what roof and siding you're going to have.
Okay.
So that we have that on record.
Yes, at Brad's Barnes, they call it chestnut. And I will try to provide a sample to Melissa for that. Sure.
And the back of it is going to be facing the road, isn't it?
The side of it would is it's kind of diagonal to the road, but like yeah, so the long side of it would like the garage doors are facing the house. And it's twenty-four feet wide and forty feet in length, which would allow you to pull in four vehicles.
Okay.
Well, I see. Yeah, it is kind of the point of it is actually toward the road, the back corner.
Yeah, the back corner. Yes.
So it's in the scenic overlay and we've been having a lot of discussions about scenic overlay lately, and this is a classic case that really doesn't need any further review. It can't be seen from anywhere. It meets all the specs. So planning board members, do you have any questions for the applicant? Again, I'm going to suggest a way for the review, but any members have questions?
Are there any trees that have to be cleared in order to make room for the structure?
Yes, good question. So there is one tree that has been cleared essentially. Yeah, another project that we're currently doing is we're building a pond. And this is something that's already been approved through Ellen and the town planning board. So anyway, to get the excavator in there, one tree was removed. But yes, there is no extensive clearing for this garage.
Right over here.
Exactly. So
This is a window shop. So like this is a tree crown.
Yeah, that that little pine right where your that right where your mouse is right there. No, actually.
This one.
No, that one is still there. That right there, that brown kind of shadow there. Yes, that is one tree. And you see most of the area where the garage is, is already cleared of trees.
Yep.
It's not like a heavily forested area that we're clearing. And yeah, so that that photo. But yes, I wouldn't say zero trees. There's one tree that, you know, I was a little upset that it needed to be moved, but that is
Planning board members, if any of the members feel that they would like to go to the site, I can assure you that you can't see it from anywhere. But if not, I would wait for the review unless any members feel they want to go up and take a look.
It's almost twenty feet below the road level if my contour lines are anything to do with that.
I heard Brian.
I agree with Peter.
Thank you.
Okay, very good then. We're going to wait for the review and just please keep in touch with Melissa to get the samples of the colors. And if you do have an outside light, it has to be dark sky compliant and we'll need what they call a cut sheet of that light. In other words, the manufacturer's specs of the light, if you have a light going on there.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know.
Miles, we'll talk at the next meeting. The planning board will approve a resolution that I draft for you and then it'll just be paperwork and you and I will go back and forth, but this is your only meeting with the planning board. Thank you, planning board and Miles.
Thank you very much for reviewing this. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Good luck.
Did we vote on something?
What time?
Did we vote on something just now? Yeah. Did we just vote on something?
We wait for the review on the garage up there on Middle Way.
No, I understand. Wait, but I'm saying, don't we have to vote on the waiver?
We can do that. Do I hear a motion to wait for the review on this case?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 And almost everybody. You got it. Thanks, John.
Okay, so next we have a discussion of the scenic overlay issues that we brought up and some changes we like to make in our reviews. So to start with, the first thing we have to determine is whether a site needs really good inspection and review. So this was a classic case that didn't. But in most cases that we will have in front of us, we're going to at least have to take a a look at someone, board members have to go up and take a look. And if it is in the view shed or in the mountainside, or we feel it's a it's a it's a sensitive area, then we discussed having a combined visit with the W E C and planning board members so that we have more eyes on the site and more people to look at it from different directions. So I think that's one of the decisions that we've come to now. Of course, we have to concur that with the W E C.
For game.
But I think they're in favor of that. I really like having the W E C help us look at environmental issues. So as Melissa said, so what's been worked on the W C is a willing participant and we value their insight and knowledge for this collaboration. So we look forward to when we have scenic overlay cases that we feel are significant, that we like the the help of the W E C. Okay, the next thing we've done that Connor brought up long ago and we've been doing, and now we're going to do more of it, which is the drone photography, showing areas of disturbance. And I don't know, Connor, would you like to speak to specifically how 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 would we tell the applicant what we need photographs of? Connor?
Good presentation.
As your admin, I think the drone photos have been working really well. The applicants have been responding very well and I haven't had any complaints of anybody having to do them. I know it costs them money, but for the most part, it's worked well. It's come. Judy's gonna Judy's gonna piggyback off of me. Go ahead, Judy.
Well, I
Connor.
Connor. Okay, I'm assuming that we can get GPS and elevation from the drone, so we know exactly where the picture was taken from, both vertically and in terms of GPS coordinates. Is that correct?
I can add that as a absolutely. You can put it right on.
Wait a minute though, you're assuming, but who answers that question? I, you know, who's going to tell us that they can actually do that?
Well, it seems to me that if we don't know exactly where the photograph was taken from, the view shed questions are not answered.
Right, I agree with you, but in terms of someone telling us that that every drone photograph that says is a GPS X is accurate. You know, I I don't have enough knowledge to know that. And is there an industry standard? Is that a fact or is it not a fact? I need to know whether it's a fact or just an assumption.
I guess that's the question I need to ask Connor because I have not worked with drones.
Hi there, guys. Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having very bad issues over. I'm gonna have to figure something out, but I'm gonna try and find some headphones. I missed some of the preface of that, but it's as well because I wanted to step back for a second and ask Peter. Now, I spoke to Alex from the W E C. And we were talking about, you know, who what would be appropriate for an agency or who to, you know, make site visits, maybe with the planning board in conjunction to determine the scope of, say, damage and mitigation strategies. And it it's not, I'm not, this is not an official position or anything like that. It's just the feeling out there is that whoever we bring should be employed by the town. Or somewhat, it needs to be someone either on the payroll or someone with, you know, credentials, you know, to make these types of determinations. Now, that's one position. I think this is the kind of thing that maybe that the W C could certainly help with or maybe should be empowered to help with, but I had originally suggested the tree committee. I'm wondering where everyone stands on that. It's one of the most important things. I'm wondering about where we as a board stand. Do we think it should be a volunteer committee or board that comes and does these follow-ups? Should it be one person employed by the town? Or should it be, I guessed, for lack of a better word, outsourced or I think Judy's holding her hand?
The answer to your question is it depends on what information we're trying to get. If we're talking about view shed, then I think the W E C or the tree committee are equally capable. We are all volunteers. Most of us don't have formal credentials in the things that we're doing for the town. If you're talking about like replanting forestry stuff, that's a different question. So what are we asking the applicant to tell us about the property? That's the basis on which we would decide who needs to go, it seems to me.
Well, I think there's two issues with the drone thing. The one that Connor started where we ask the applicant to provide drone photos of the site where they're building the house. That's just so we can see the existing foliage, existing trees, existing, what's right there. So that eventually we could relook at it if we had to. That's different than looking at it from a view shed's point of view. And the other issue is, as Connor was talking about with the with the W E C, as I said before, we used to do when we had a scenic overlay case and it was on the view shed, we used to just have one or two members of the planning board go up and look. So what I'm suggesting now is we do more than that. We have more than a few, more than two members of the planning board and members of the W E C to all go up and be able to make a opinion whether this fits the criteria or not. And so anyway, Connor, you go on. I just wanted to get that straight.
Well, I guess so. We're just talking then. And I do apologize if we're backpedaling a bit because I've been having these issues trying to get this to work. But we're just then talking about an initial assessment, right? Like we we get a complaint, something happens in the process that we need to go up and either look at damage after it's done or assess whether just something is in the view shed. That's the only part we're talking about right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. In other words, as I said before, if one or two of us said, oh, I know this area and such and such, but I think if there's more people that look at the site from different angles, from different positions, we'll get a better understanding of how, what we may have to request on the site plan to mitigate if that's if that's necessary.
But are we talking about damage? Or are we talking about when somebody comes to us in the first place and wants to build there?
That's it. That's it.
That's what I thought, but Connor seems to be That's what I thought, but Connor seems to be talking about situations where damage has been done and the question is to evaluate the damage. I think we're talking about more than that. If anybody wants to build in the in the scenic overlay, to have somebody look at where they're going to put the house in terms of the general issues attached to the scenic overlay. Whether they cut a tree or they haven't.
This is Brian. I thought that this, we had made a decision on this already. We've been talking about this now for over a half a year, right? And I thought a decision was made to use drones for this type of application. Am I incorrect on that?
Yeah, that's correct. That's we started that process, but what we're trying to get at now is to be specific to the applicant, what we really want to see clearly. So.
Oh, okay. So in the drone photos, it, I mean, it's it's I think it's just gotta be at a scope where we can see either I we we I think we should, depending on again, the scale of the building, like we should be seeing the entire area of disturbance plus any relevant setbacks or boundaries, you know, enough to incorporate that in the case of the view shed. It what we really do also want to see is I guess, again, for lack of the avionic terminology, it's a just straight fly out out of the view shed with a wide lens scope, so you can get a look at where it's located in relation to the canopy from a viewing distance.
That is my point. We need to have GPS and elevation to know where that picture was taken.
And that and all of that is super easy to get with this technology.
That's my understanding.
So there's so that would be two more things. Yeah.
My point was when 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 Connor was trying to come up and and Judy went on, all the drone photos that we got have all been done by professionals. Like I've gotten them through whoever had done them. I have not yet to see like a I have behind my door rolled up huge. I mean, I can't imagine what they paid for this job. So we're getting what we asked for. So the fact that we just add these words and say GPS and do not like we're getting it and we can absolutely add what the GPS coordinates and whatever.
And elevation.
Elevation.
Can I make a suggestion, please?
Of course.
It sounds like we just need a simple spec sheet, a simple spreadsheet with items that are specs or requirements for drone footage. And it's that simple. And then if it needs to be differentiated by application, for example, if it's scenic overlay versus if there's damage or something, maybe there's two or three categories, then we just do that, put it on one sheet and then make a decision as to whether this is going to be farmed out to, I don't know, a list of drone providers, or if we're gonna contract with one or two folks through the town and then be done with it.
Yes, exactly. We we need especially, as you say, for the applicant to know what we expect to see in that drone photo.
I think the GPS and elevation are are obvious first two ones. A pro, you know, maybe a couple descriptors of the types of vantages we're looking for. Especially in the case of of damage. And I do want to say I'm very interested in getting the board's opinions on 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 how to assess mitigation is and for mitigation as well, because the Z R C, we're trying to wrap this up over there. And having official recommendations on these specific things from the planning board would be very helpful to that.
Brian, I just want to address to, yes, we've been talking and talking and talking. But we've been asked by other people who come to the meeting, what are we doing? What are we doing? So this is why I took it upon myself to write the form that I had emailed you guys to say, these are things that we have done and you guys as a board, what do you want me to do? So we can put this to bed and not put it on our agenda and keep moving forward. So Brian, I apologize if it feels like it's been in our faces a lot lately.
No, you shouldn't apologize. I mean.
That's where we're at. John.
John has his hand up there.
Well, I'm hearing mixed enforcement and site plan review issues. Comes to enforcement after the fact, we're not going to be involved in that.
Nope. Nope, not at all, John. And actually, to answer Judy's question, which is the next, the next paragraph from Melissa's sheet here, which is some suggestions for the future. And just to make everybody clear that I, you know, there was a discrepancy in the codes as to whether the planning board or the or the building inspector looks at it first. So it's been made quite clear that this is the situation. The building department can issue building permits in the scenic overlay if they feel it's no problem. The only ones that we will review are the ones that are referred to us by the building department. And so there that will be just for buildings. So we're not really ever going to look at oh, you know, clear cutting or open or just scars in the mountain that have that weren't related to one of our applications for buildings. So we will only get those that are referred to us by the building department.
Peter.
Yep.
I don't see how anything fruitful can come out of this without some sort of a ordinance or regulation that involves notifying a landowner upon purchase.
Well, John, that was definitely one of the issues.
We
Realtors, we have to be accountable.
Yeah. We had been talking about that to create a disclosure form for realtors to provide to their clients at the point of sale. So this is something that would be, they would be required to inform them of, have them sign and return to us as a means of, you know, clarifying that these these restrictions are understood, not just you know, loosely.
Realtors are very familiar with disclosure forms. They deal with all kinds of issues. So this is just, I don't see this as a big burden on anybody.
No, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some of my former brethren will will argue to me.
So I propose that that Melissa put together a simple spreadsheet, a spec sheet on this. And and then we could circulate it for review and approval. And then we could decide how it's used and add to it as we did. Let's, I think that's a good way to start.
So let me this, though, because I feel like what keeps happening is we get these violations either in the beginning or the middle of our review.
There wasn't a violation.
Oh, well, that's, well, I I guess that's true. We get we get these.
We have not seen a violation.
There is no violation. You're right. I use that loosely. My apologies. We have seen these occurrences happen, you know, in the middle of our review. It strikes up a lot of fervor and I'll just say on the Z R C, you know, we want to try to nip that in the bud. So my question is, and if again, with the without the planning board, we're already involved in the process at that point. Who then in an ideal world, not now, you know, but if we, you know, take a look at the zoning law, we say create a body of some kind to prefer these things to for even fine consideration on top of strategy and all that. Do you feel like that's the way to do it to hand it up to someone or should the board have?
Yeah, and I I think if I may, that's all well and good, but that that's a different discussion. What I'm trying to keep circle back to is let's get the drone specs down first. And then all these other issues, they're not secondary, but they're separate. Right now, Melissa and I think Peter were just trying to get the specs.
I I was under the impression this was a broader discussion about the scenic overlay stuff because we had spoken before about sending our thoughts and recommendations to the Z R C. And I and and, you know, if if now is not the time that I I understand that, but we are kind of at the 11th hour in terms of taking and we really want that consideration. I really I personally really want to hear your thoughts after especially those last couple of rounds. But we also got to put something in soon. And I'm concerned already about the amount of time it's going to take and the will. Yeah.
And if I may, I mean, I know I I'm not arguing that, but what I'm trying to do now is instead of having this creep, let's, can we get consensus on the specs? Do we agree that Melissa could put that together and circulate it? And then if we want to discuss these other things, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And we also, Peter and I have had a few conversations because we have been making moves and we have been discussing this. We have owned, you know, this is what we want to do differently. Peter and I have talked about adding on all of our applications, a little spot that says, you know, are you in the scenic overlay? You know, and it's just awareness. So if you guys are good with that, I'm totally cool with putting that on all of our applications. But I want you guys to say, yes, that's what you want. Again, that was one thing. We're, yeah, we're trying to reel it in and just move forward.
Okay.
We are in trouble because we're talking about five different things all at the same time.
Exactly.
We need, I think, to look at it in the sequence in which properties get dealt with. So the first thing we need is something that the Realtor is required to have the buyer sign. The second thing we need is to clarify in the law whether the planet, whether the building department can approve anything in the scenic overlay without it going through the planning board, because there are two different bits of language and they disagree with each other on that point. The third thing is to require applicants, when they are actually ready to do something with the property that they have already bought, to provide us with drone footage that will allow us to evaluate the impact on the view shed, which means elevation and GPS and probably flying that drone out quite a far distance from the site. But those are all different things that we're mixing them all together and it's one of the reasons we're getting so frustrated.
Well, I we have a list of items that we're going over that we discussed at the last time around, and we're trying to get these items clarified and and as and as Brian is saying, in a sheet. And one of the things that Connor worked on and that we talked about was cleared up some of the definitions that we have in the code that we inspect on. And one of them is definitions of clear cutting, minimal cutting, grandfathered in an essential and non-essential tree cutting. So Connor came up with a a a code, I guess I could say, of what we will define as essential cutting or minimal cutting, we should put it that way. And he's read that before to define minimal cutting. So that we actually can put that in writing and add that to our to our sheet. So that's important. And the other thing that Connor brought up and we need to look at is the fines if if now this is not part of our purview and it's not part of our site inspection. We don't deal with fines in any such a way. But it has been brought up in all the discussions by by other people that something has to be done if people just blatantly cut down trees after they've gotten their approval. And so that that's the fines. Then there was brought up about moratorium and John pointed out that it's not a good thing to work with moratoriums. They just don't seem to to work well. I know, John, you you explain how you feel about the moratorium on the on the scenic overlay.
Well, number one, it's going to be a very tedious process to put in place. And whether or not it's effective is questionable. Moratoriums will be debated. They haven't worked well in the past. That's all I can say, Peter. I mean, they really have not. Stuart.
Yeah, you know, maybe I'm playing devil's advocate, but if the rules for the scenic overlay are going to change, then would it make sense to do it, you know, a moratorium in the interim so that until the rules are settled, we don't make any, you know, specific determinations and then, you know, the next day we're going to change the rules. I mean, it just seems we're in a limbo period at this point.
I think for a prescribed period of time, relatively short, it would work. But I'm talking about a period of 90 days or less for the moratorium.
Yeah, that's a concern of mine, too. I mean, hearing this could take up to, you know, maybe even a year or more. You know, to get this through, you know, who knows not before it can, you know, town board decides to do anything with it, but then after that to go through probably the county and the state, like it could be a long time.
Okay, so what's going on is Brian brought up, we we're trying to set a set of rules or codes that we do site inspections for that we are given to to do in the scenic overlay. So this one set of things we're talking about is something we can do without any change of laws, without any change of anything, just how we go about doing our site inspections. And we've discussed that zone, I mean, drones, more people on the site, W E C involved, stuff like that, and then mitigation measures if we feel necessary to keep the building obscure from from view. So those are things we can do, things that we're long term looking at would be stuff like changing the code, moratorium. And more specifically, I want to bring this up right now. I believe we need to get a photographic record of our mountainsides as they exist right now. Which it means getting either professional like David Lacks, which we'd have to do something like a GoFundMe because he has to get paid. He's a professional, but he can take drone footage with GPS coordinates. He can put that drone and give you exact coordinates where that drone is. And so that we can really go back to that exact place and take the exact same pictures in the future, you know, looking in the same direction. So if we can't do a GoFundMe, maybe we can get volunteer professional photographers in town to do it, but the pictures have to be taken from a known point, looking at the mountainsides that we're concerned with. And to have a record of what they look like now. I just want to remind everybody that 250 years ago, there wasn't a tree in this town. It was all fields. So it's we need to have a of records right now of what our mountainsides look like. Now, that's different than our day to day inspections that we're talking about going about. This is a long term thing. Yes, Judy?
Well, I have recently found out that if you take a photograph with an iPhone or presumably an Android as well, it can connect to the map and you can get a coordinate. It's not totally precise, but it's close enough for our purposes. So if a bunch of people went out with cell phones and they photographed specific sectors of the mountainside, we would know where they were standing on the ground when they took that picture within maybe 20 feet.
Yeah, this is true. The only thing, the only reason I bring up the drone and believe I see these mountains.
The drone, because if you're taking it from a hillside, you need to know how high it is. There's lots of images in the drone.
Right, but Judy, I see today, yesterday I was on the mountainside on McDaniel Road looking out over the mountains. I, as a surveyor, I get to see these mountainsides all the time. I'm usually on private property when I'm doing that. And if I'm on a road, there's trees blocking my view. So I gotta get higher than the trees so I get a clearer view. The other thing is you need a photographer who has the lens capability to focus on the trees. I've taken pictures with with the smartphones of the mountains and they look beautiful, but they're not focused on the trees. That's the way the focusing works.
Yeah.
We need to have the focus that we're looking at the trees and not pictures that are, you know, like you know, a
Landscape view.
Yeah, I mean, I I've seen lots of beautiful pictures of the mountains with the clouds and the, but that's not what we're interested. We want to be able to clearly see. We want to be able to clearly see right into the tree line photographs. Yes, Stuart.
So, uh, a couple of questions. Do we know how many, how many parcels there are in the scenic overlay?
I couldn't figure that out. I don't know.
Do we know? We told you 300, 100, how many are there?
Oh, more than that.
We have to, we have to remember, Stuart, that we're only concerned with the ones that are under view shed.
Right, okay. So let's say it's X number. I mean, I, you know, pick a number. So then what would be the cost to hire somebody to perform this on a professional basis? And then where do, where does the town find the money to do that? Are there any grants available for our environmental perspective or other things? Because to me, it's something that the town should fund. You know, I don't like they're doing like a, why should we have to do a GoFundMe thing to, to, to get something done that's in a public benefit? I mean, it seems to me that there's all kinds of projects in the newspaper all the time that the town board is considering, you know, this, that, and the other thing and bonds and everything, but this is nuts and bolts that will benefit the town and, and support the preservation of the, the scenic overlay. So I, I, yeah, I don't know. Why, why is the burden on us to figure out how to fund this? I mean, to me, it's got to go to the town board.
I have an idea. Why doesn't our letter, our memo to the town board be, we're tightening up site visits, I'm going to add scenic overlay to our applications. Why don't we start with town board and supervisor McKenna, if we can work on getting a drone photography of the landscape view of the mountainside?
What's that?
Is my audio bad because I could not hear Melissa?
I can hear you, John.
I can hear everyone.
All right, John, can you hear me?
No, I can't.
Okay.
Yes.
Mary, okay, so I think we're, we're headed in the right direction. I'm going to put scenic overlay, check yes or no on the applications. We're tightening up our site visits. We're talking more about all of this. But maybe the first place that we start is a memo to the town board and supervisor McKenna asking what their thoughts are on, and this is what we'd like to see. Let, let's start there. Let's keep it broad and start there. What's your thought, planning board?
I think we should be more, uh, affirmative. Instead of asking what their thoughts are, I think we should make a recommendation that they draw up a, a RFP, request for proposals to qualified photographers with, with professional credentials um, to establish a photographic record of the view shed and the scenic overlay and then see what comes in. I'll be glad to ask David Lacks to get a quote in. I mean, he's, he's a professional at, at that stuff.
The way you want to write, you want to draft it up for me and we can have the planning board look it over?
Um, I, I just want to put out there, uh, Dave Lacks is currently, uh, I believe touring the country.
Right now.
But, uh,
Is he in a band or something?
No, I, you, you, well, yeah, I mean, he's, I, I don't know if you knew this, he's actually a ridiculous, but, uh, harmonica player. He's one of the best in like the country.
Cool.
But, uh, in any event, um, I have s- some draft language that I'd really like to get input from the board on. So I forwarded the latest draft from me and Ed over to Melissa to distribute. And I'm really hoping that at our next meeting, we can compile some sort of response. That what I'd like to do ideally is give back to the ZRC with any recommended changes or clarifications. Again, this is not, we're, we're, we, we want to put it through a, another round of scrutiny, but, uh, I, we want to do it with more input. And then, and then we would send this again with your input and, and other boards' inputs to the town for review. And that would umbrella, you know, the concerns we're talking about as well as have it drafted as, you know, uh, revised zoning language.
Okay, we, I do have a question though.
Yes, Judy?
Who has to authorize a form that the Realtors have to use?
I think the town's going to have to do all of this at least, right? I mean, if not the county.
On board for all parcels, uh, being conveyed. Down at Woodstock, uh, brokers, uh, on those transactions will be required to distribute X, you know.
Well, I think that ought to be one of the priority items.
That is, I, I, I'm looking through it now. I don't believe that is actually in the, uh, language yet. That's part of the reason, um, you know, we want to send it around and see, you know, Stu, I'd actually love to pick your brain on the way you just phrased that because I've actually, it's been escaping me a little bit, but.
Give me a call. I mean, if you can remind me what I said, I'd be glad to tell you what was.
And this photograph, just one second, Brian, this photographic record, by the way, has to be both winter and summer. We need to see in the winter and in the summer. Yeah, Brian, go ahead.
So if I'm hearing correctly, and there's been a lot of good feedback, Judy's had, she had about four or five requirements or areas listed for inspections. John had a couple, Stuart had one, Peter had one or two. And Connor, you're looking for some deadlines for some deliverables that you need to have done. I'm looking at this agenda and, and forgive me, is there a document that lists all these things somewhere?
Uh, the, the, the one I'm quoting from is what Melissa, I don't know if she sent it to everybody. Melissa made up.
Okay.
Did you send it? I don't remember getting it, but I'm drowning in emails right now because I'm on six committees.
Something that, there's something that, uh, you sent Melissa and that's what you're working off of. Okay.
These millions of thoughts with the brain power of what we can do and what we really can't do. I'm trying to tighten it up, kind of as Brian said, because we are very all over the place, as Judy pointed out. Um, yeah.
So, okay, getting back to Brian's, uh, list of what we can do, there's two more, three more things we have on our list. We didn't say that we can do from now on as a planning board in inspections without changing laws or anything. So one of them is the glazing requirements. We've been a little lax on saying, uh, uh, you know, we keep the glazing under the percentage, but, um, I think we're going to have to ask that all glazing on this side facing outwards from the mountain has to be, um, glare resistant, all of it, all the glazing. And then we have a question of metal roofs. We used to just say, okay, to any metal roof. I think we now have to be very careful because some metal roofs, as Calvin Grimm pointed out, can reflect the sun quite well. So we have to be very specific about metal roofs. And, uh, I guess those are the main things. So that's, those are the issues that we need to adopt for planning board inspections of sites. And then we have future work, which Connor's working on with the zoning revision committee. To, to, to look at in the scenic overlay. And then of course, we have the, um, the, his, the record of the mountainsides that, you know, that we need to get. And I agree that um, we shouldn't have to do a GoFundMe, but, uh, we're going to have to reach out to our community to help us do this somehow.
Reach out to our town board.
Yeah, it's, it's really a political decision by the, by the town board as to, they really want to do it or not.
Melissa, I'm sorry, when did you, and I forgive me, planning board, I should have, I didn't see that. When did you send it?
Early on, um, probably almost, I'd say at least 10, 12 days ago. I did it pretty much right after the last meeting. It's all good.
I can't find it.
Can you? There, I saw it. Well, you, it, you can resend it, I suppose, if people want.
Sorry.
All right, so guys, we're, um, what I'm, I am going to add scenic overlay to all our applications. I'm going to work on that in the next few weeks. I will resend you this and you guys can, everyone can read it.
And add to it, which is I think what we're thinking out of this.
And I think I'm, I'm on pause right now and we'll pick back up next meeting with a little bit more. And maybe after you guys read this, you can see, because we have been doing things, we have been making moves. And I think we are progressing, um, with the conversations that have been had.
And Connor, you have a deadline for next meeting to have something, is, am I understanding that correctly?
Does anybody else have any other input onto the si- discussion of the scenic overlay? Otherwise we'll move on to some other issues.
Okay, no.
Judy, has to end up?
Just one quick thing. Getting a view shed photographed is a non-trivial problem. Because every place you stand in the town, you have a different view.
Right, so I'm suggesting that we pick like 10 or 12 points. We can't photograph every single inch of the mountainside. We just got to pick the basic ones. Um, you know, we've got like seven mountains going down in a, in a line of the Catskills right through town. And so it would be the faces of those mountains.
Both sides of the valley.
Both sides.
Both valleys.
Both valleys.
Uh, I'm sorry to jump around, but yes, Brian, uh, can y'all hear me okay now? Good dude, sorry about the patchwork system here, but, um, I, uh, yes, if, if possible, I would, I've, I've sent the language out already to, uh, Melissa. And if she can.
Today, just now?
Just now, just now.
Like I haven't gotten that.
No, 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 yeah, I, now, all, she, she, all right, she will have gotten it and can distribute it. And if, if everyone can please, it's not very long. It, it's just a couple pages right now. We're going to add more specifics about the disclosure as we figure out, you know, who is going to draft it. I imagine, you know, we would want to hire an attorney for that as well. So, uh, we'll keep, we'll keep things moving in that regard. But any suggestions for additions or modified language to what's already there? Um, please, uh, nothing's, you know, off limits.
Okay, so, uh, the next issue is for the board is to discuss what we'd like to have, uh, on the agenda for our March 31st workshop. Melissa sent out a list of items that.
I only sent that to you.
We could cover.
Only sent it to you.
I only sent that one to you.
But, uh, one of the top ones is the comprehensive plan, which I know we've discussed before, but when the planning board makes decisions, um, one of the things we have to guide us is the comprehensive plan. Um, so I don't know if we want to go through that in the workshop. And the other issue is general standards. Um, that, and is, and is, uh, as Stuart brought up one time in another case, um, we have general standards that, uh, we can refer to. And, and we have to look, you know, one of the questions, does it fit the, uh, the milieu? Does it fit the, uh, uh, the, the town? These are things with the general standards that we have to look at. So does anybody have suggestions of what they would like to do on the workshop? That we think we should do?
I think, uh, refresher on this, the standards is a good idea. Um, I, I don't think, uh, few years I've been on the board, I've never had that input from anyone. So, and since there are newer members than I on the board, I think we will benefit from a refresher on what are the standards that are at our disposal to apply to a given case?
Okay. Sorry, sorry, Stuart.
I don't know who would present it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We could, uh, ask for a presenter so that we could get credit for it. Again, we could have, uh, Matt or any, uh, planner, uh, trained planner give a presentation.
Yeah.
For us. So how about that, Melissa? We'll look into that, getting someone to present the standards to us. All right. All right. The next issue on unfinished business is to designate site reps for all the cases that came before us. Last meeting. So, um, there's a subdivision. There's a, um, little house going in the scenic overlay. There's a bridge. That might be something else. I volunteered for the bridge.
You ready? You ready? We'll start with Patrick Swindell, which is over on 60 Cross, Cross Patch Road in Willow. And that's an S U P for construction of a new home.
My question always is, is it something that can be done from my car? Will I be able to see your stakes?
Oh yeah, 100%, yeah, absolutely.
Well, then I'm willing to do Swindell. We just have to decide on when I would do it. I mean, I hardly ever get out, but not, I'm not spending enough time on the maps, but.
Just five minutes down the hill, so, you know, whenever I can just, I can drive up there and meet you. It's no problem at all.
Okay, I'm willing to be the Swindell rep. I don't know if we need two. We've always had two.
Yeah. Do I hear another person? Cross Patch Road in Willow? Construction of a new home.
Let's try to get just one and get them covered.
Okay.
Peter, is that what you want to do? Just one? Okay, Judy, the second, Brian, you had volunteered for, uh, a subdivision on 7 Elwin Lane. Are you still game to go over and look it out?
That's an element Judy can go to too, because you can just drive there.
Sure.
Brian, it is.
Where am I going again?
Uh, 7 Elwin Lane, but I will give you all the details.
Okay, thank you.
More questions, of course. I know Peter, I think Peter's going to go for the Steel Beam Bridge. It's a wetlands and water course permit in Lake Hill. I guess we'll call that good. And then we have a subdivision on a beautiful property that I think if you guys have a chance to go, you should go on 59 Silver Hollow Road in Willow.
Sure.
Is it drivable?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. All right. So this is, I just need Judy, weekday, weekend, what's your best option?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, Brian?
Wait, I guess weekend is a little easier, an afternoon in the weekend, just because that, uh, then I don't have other meetings and stuff that I have to go work around.
Brian, what's your, what's your best time?
I'm just, I'm just going to go there.
Okay. Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Um, you know, if there's questions, we can, you can get in touch with me and I can get in touch with the applicant and all the applicants are willing to meet everybody, so.
Yeah, if you could just kindly send me the information again, so I have it at the top.
Absolutely. You know it. All right, that's good. I am good. We just need to approve credits for Judy.
Okay, we got credits for Judy and, and before I give credits to Judy, I want to give a credit to Judy for something. Um, I know that we discussed at the last meeting to try to get the Hudsonia information on the county map. And she's got that done, or they're going to do it.
The wet ones, the wet ones anyway.
The wet ones, yeah, the Hudsonian wet ones. So we'd like to make a motion to approve credits to Judy for attending the intro to Bernal Fools webinar through Hudson Valley Estuary Program on January 25th.
Favor.
It's unanimous.
You guys can hear me now?
Yep.
Very good. Sorry about that.
I am learning so much about GIS programs, but I can't get credit for that because nobody's teaching it and giving me a certificate.
I never got a response on that either, Judy.
Don't worry about it. I've got more credits than I need for this year and next. I mean, as long as it's Zoom and I don't have to get into a car and drive an hour and sit in an uncomfortable chair, I'm willing to do continuing Ed.
Peter, I thought about the GoFundMe page too.
Okay, um, everybody, does anybody have any other issues they want to bring up before we adjourn? Is everybody good?
We are.
Everybody excited to see tomorrow, a nice rainy icy day?
Can't wait. Can't wait.
Okay, well, entertain a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Backing.
In favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everybody, and do be careful tomorrow. It should be pretty slippery.
Good luck. Go Bills next year.
All right, everybody, have a good evening.
You're welcome. Melissa, thank you for everything.
Oh, really?
You're the best. Keep those cards coming.
You're a rock.
Thanks, Tom. We're going to get through this all together.
All right, I'm leaving now. Bye.
Bye.